All right, good evening. Apparently we have some business to accomplish tonight.
All right, good evening. Apparently we have some business to accomplish tonight. So, welcome to the City of San Carlos City Council's Central Agency to the redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting of December 10, 2018. And I call the meeting to order, and we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scouts Troop 61865. Did I get that number right? Because that's what's typed here. Okay. Ladies, let's everybody rise, and we'll go from there.
Color Guard, attention. Girl Scouts, ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the flag of your country. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Whoops. Oops, sorry. Sorry. I didn't get a copy of the script on that, I'm sorry. Whoops. Anyway, thank you again, ladies, very much. Item number three, changes the order of agenda. Mr. Malpe, any changes?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on the day ask want to change anything? All right. Presentations. We have some presentations tonight. We're going to present some city coins to the Single Family House Advisory Committee members. This was a group of people that, I guess it was about eight people, as I remember, that was a committee formed of citizens to look at all our rules and regulations of sizes of houses and things like that. And they spent an enormous amount of time working on the item. And needless to say, they did a terrific job and recommended some great stuff to the planning commission and then on to the city council. So, I'm going to come down, I guess, Crystal, and got some names here. Some of the folks couldn't be here tonight. Some can. Hello? All right. So, I think three people are here, and if there are more than three, please correct me. So, the first person is Laura Palmer Lohan. Jeez, I recognize that name. Laura, I let you speak, but you're going to speak later, so thank you very much for your service. Amy Anderson Gugliano? God, I should be able to say that, being Italian. I should, since I'm Italian, huh? Anyway, thank you so much. Thank you very much. And last but not least, Kate Wilmington. Is Kate here? Yes? Thank you, Kate. Thank you so much. Thanks for being involved. Is there anyone here that I missed that was on the committee? I'm sorry? Oh, Mr. Stafford. Robert Stafford, please come forward. Thanks, Robert. Thanks very much. Anyone else that I'm missing? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I wasn't, I got to get the names here. Ray Biotti. Ray? Thanks, Ray. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, now, am I missing anyone else? Great. Well, thank you, folks, again. Again, these folks did tireless work to try to help, should we say, modernize how we're going to be building houses in the future. So, thank you again. Okay. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Normally, public comment is for items not on the posted agenda, but we're going to have a little bit of change tonight. Anyone who wants to make public comment on anything, even if it's on the posted agenda, can come up. I only have one speaker card so far, but if other people want to come up, they just need to fill out a card later on so that the city clerk can have a record. Michelle Nefak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Nefak. I'm the president of the San Carlos School Board. I just wanted to come tonight to say a heartfelt thank you to all of our city council members who are leaving the council tonight, and to say a warm welcome on behalf of the Board of Trustees to our new city council members who are taking office. And the board looks forward to working with you all in the coming years. So, thank you very much, everyone, for your service.
Thank you, Michelle. And congratulations to your husband, who was elected to the Sequoia Hospital Foundation Board. So, congratulations. Anyone else wishing to speak and public comment? This is your chance. Yes, please come forward. Please come forward, if you're going to speak, sir. Just give them the microphone, and we have to record everything. Go ahead. Sure, no problem. Sure. Not a problem. How are you?
Hi. This is regards to an email I sent you. I don't know if it went on to the agenda or not.
Well, it's not, don't worry about it. Whatever you want to speak about, sir, tonight is fine.
Okay. So, this is regards to 222 Hillcrest.
Okay.
And there was an issue when there was a repair that was done about a year and a half ago. About a year and a half ago, whereas they raised a manhole in front of Ms. White's driveway, Ms. White, and it created a hump. And where she sits, the driveway is at a pretty steep grade. So, we had just repaved it, or repavered it, to contour to the streets, but then we were asked by the city to change the entrance, to put it into the swale or the grate system. Because we had to change it, they cannot get into the driveway anymore because of the hump that's only in front of their driveway, that when they repaved the street, they didn't fix the hump. They repaved on top of it and added another four inches to it. So, at this point, they cannot even use their driveway, and they've already damaged a vehicle, I think you said, already.
Would you let you say anything?
I would. I would. Okay, so, I've lived here since 1995.
Move a little closer to the mic, it'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
I've been a resident here in San Carlos since 1995. I see a lot of familiar faces. We did some work to our house because our street, there's not a lot of parking, and we have a two-car garage and driveway, which is kind of narrow with retaining walls. So, we widened it so we could have better access to parking. We spent a lot of money to get it done, and after we did it, the city red-tagged us and said the driveway met the street, didn't meet code, and we were required to do more work, regrade, meet it, meet into the swale.
Swale.
Rebuild that. We did it, and now we can't use it. We can't. My husband bottoms out. I have a four-wheel-drive car. I can't get in. We have to put a filler in. And the city signed off on it, and I feel like I'm monkey in the middle.
Okay. As I remember, I did get the email, and I think Mr. Michita, hopefully Stephen has been in contact with you, or Paul Corcoran. Well, he will be if he hasn't. He, I think he was out last week, but he'll be in contacting you and discussing various options, hopefully.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Michita will be contacting you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck with that. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on anything tonight? Any item that's on the agenda or off the agenda or anything? All right. Look, Mr. Michita is right there talking to him. Isn't that great? Look at that. Boy, I tell you what, the power of the mayor, I tell you. I don't know that I want to give this up. This is pretty cool. Oh, I guess we have to do a reorganization now. So, we'll go to 6A. Consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the certificates of the chief elections officer and the statement of votes cast in the consolidated general municipal election held on November 6, 2018, and declaring the results. Thus, adopting ordinance 1532 amending the uniform transient occupancy tax and ordinance 1533 imposing an excise tax on cannabis business. So, is there, Mr. Malpe, any report or anything?
I'll be reporting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Crystal, city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Crystal Moy, your city clerk. A general municipal election was held in San Carlos on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the purpose of electing three new council members for a full term of four years, and for voting on measures NN, a cannabis business tax, and measure QQ, a transient occupancy tax. The results of the election, as reported by San Mateo County's Chief Elections Officer, Mark Church, are as follows. For the Office of City Council, Ken Castle received 3,476 votes. Adam Rack received 8,321 votes. Laura Palmer Lohan received 9,954 votes. John McDowell received 4,454 votes. And Sarah McDowell received 9,624 votes. Therefore, Laura Palmer Lohan, Sarah McDowell, and Adam Rack received the highest number of votes for the Office of City Council. Measure NN relating to cannabis business tax required a majority vote to pass. It received 11,775 yes votes and 3,292 no votes. Therefore, this measure passed. And measure QQ relating to transient occupancy tax also required a majority vote to pass. It received 11,824 yes votes and 3,273 no votes. Therefore, this measure also passed. It is recommended that the city council now adopt a resolution to accept the certificates of the chief elections officer and the statement of votes.
All right, thank you, Crystal. So, are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor. Actually, Crystal, do we do each one of these individually or all at once?
All at once would be fine.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2018-.
113.
113. A resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos, accepting the certificates of the chief elections officer and the statement of votes cast in the consolidated general municipal election held on November 6, 2018, and declaring the results. Thus, adopting ordinance 1532, an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 3.24, Uniform Transient Occupancy Tax, increasing the tax rate by 2% effective January 1, 2019, and authorizing additional 0.5% increases each subsequent January 1, up to a maximum of 14%, and making other changes. And adopting ordinance 1533, an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.09, Regulation of Commercial Cannabis Activities, and imposing an excise tax of up to 10% of grocery receipts on cannabis businesses for unrestricted general purposes, subject to the approval of the voters.
A second? All right, it's moved in second. Any discussion on these items?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to note, I think Mark meant to say Municipal Code, Chapter 8.09.
Okay.
Yes, he did.
All right. Will you all square? Anything else? If no other comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, the next item is presentation of retiring council members, but, or presentation to retiring council members. But before they do that, I think some of us have a few things to say, so. Everybody seated? Good, that's great. Mr. Johnson, why don't you start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good night, everybody. Excuse me, good evening, everyone. I should start if I said good night. Good evening. Thanks for being here. I wanted to start tonight by extending my congratulations to Sarah, Laura, and Adam. It makes me feel a lot better, leaving the city council, knowing that such capable people are coming in to take my place. I know you guys are going to do an outstanding job, and I will always be here to help if I can. I wanted to mostly tonight share a few appreciations and a little bit of unsolicited advice. First and foremost, I want to thank my family, my wife Selena, my daughter Josephine, my son Ellis. Thank you for all of your unending love and support in allowing me to do this job. I think many of us have learned in life that often achieving your goals has a lot to do with who you choose to marry, and in my case, that is definitely true. So, thank you, and I love you. Second, I want to give an appreciation to all of our wonderful city staff. Being a civil servant is a very hard job, particularly these days, and you do an outstanding job on behalf of the people of San Carlos. I'd ask all of you in the audience and anyone listening, you know, the next time you see somebody who's a city worker, maybe in a city truck, or at a window, take a moment to say hello and maybe consider thanking them for the work that they do on behalf of our community. I want to thank our city manager, Jeff Malpe, who's done an outstanding job. You have led us from serious fiscal problems to a moment of the greatest prosperity probably in the city's history. And you've shown great leadership in guiding us through a lot of challenges that we've faced and controversial issues along the way. I'd like to also share some appreciations for my colleagues. So, to Ron, I think, you know, your depth of caring for this community is unmatched, and you have really told me, taught me what it means to deeply care for a place in a community. You take every email and every comment that comes your way exceptionally seriously, maybe too seriously for your own sake, but I think that we are all very lucky to have you supporting or representing us on the city council. To Matt, you honestly have taught me that sometimes it's okay to say no, that it is sometimes okay to stand on principle. You've made it easier for me to do so in the times when I have felt like it was important to do so. And I would say, most importantly, you've taught all of us that it's possible to disagree without being disagreeable, which is really important, especially now. To Mark, I appreciate that you're always willing to challenge us and ask the question, you know, why can't we do it differently in San Carlos? Why can't we be the first to try something new? You've always come to this role from a posture of creativity and innovation, and I have really appreciated that. And to Bob, you know, when I first joined the council, I wanted to do a lot, and I wanted to change a whole bunch of things. And I remember saying to Jeff one day in a moment of frustration, I was like, it doesn't seem like Bob wants to do anything. But I was very wrong. What you taught me is that the real work of this job is to be a caretaker of an institution, and you have done that exceptionally well, more than I have seen really in any other individual, and I have learned a tremendous amount from you that I will carry on for the rest of my life. And that leads me to a little bit of unsolicited advice for the new city council members. It has certainly been an interesting time to practice politics over the last five years. Some people may say, you know, cities have it great, and city council members have it great, because you're immune from all of the, you know, partisanship in Washington, DC. I think we may be insulated, but I think we're certainly not immune, and a lot of the bad incentives and a lot of the bad behavior affect city council members and affect cities as well. I think it's important for all of us to remember that we are the most personal and the most accessible form of government, and we have a deep responsibility to live up to the ideals of our government. So, I hope that you will remember that most of what we do as elected officials is make trade-offs. There is usually no one right answer. There are sometimes wiser choices than others. I hope that you will seek out dissenting points of view and listen to them rather than dismissing those who don't agree with you. I hope you will acknowledge that you don't have all the answers, and I hope that when you take a vote on a controversial topic, you take a moment to acknowledge that the other side is a reasonable point of view held by well-meaning people. And I hope that you will seek to compromise and choose to make imperfect incremental progress over making the perfect point. We are in an imperfect, people-driven system, and I hope you'll remember that the currency is the trust and the goodwill of the public. And our most important responsibility, even though individual issues will come and go, the most important responsibility is to be caretakers of our public institutions. So, my final appreciation is for the residents of our community. We live in a wonderful place. The weather is great. We all enjoy living here, but it's really the people that make the community what it is. I have been inspired by the countless selfless acts that I've witnessed in my five years on the city council. People have volunteered their time, their resources, their, you know, good wishes more times than I can count, and they've always sought to make our community a better place. And I am grateful for the trust that you have placed in me. All of you and this entire community will always be a large part of my personal story, and I hope that I will be remembered as playing a very small part in your story. So, thank you for five great years.
Matt, before we get to you, there's a few people that have come in that I want to introduce from other jurisdictions and whatever. And also, first, I want to introduce our treasurer of the City of San Carlos, Michael Galvin, who has served us tirelessly. As I look around the room, I see Senator Jerry Hill has joined us. Thank you, Senator, very much. Hey, Senator Hill. I see that former mayor of Foster City, Pam Frisella, has joined us. And no, we are not related. And I also noticed that, are you the mayor now? The mayor of Milbrae, Gina Pappin, and councilmember Wayne Lee from Milbrae. Have I, have, pardon me? Oh, certainly, and, I forgot, almost, but not quite, but thank you. Supervisor Don Horsley. Have I missed, have I missed any electeds that have stuck in that I can't see because I'm not sitting up?
Former mayor.
Oh, I'm going to get to that on my speech, yeah, on my speech, yeah. But anyway, thanks, Ron.
David Bronstein's here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. David Bronstein, former mayor of Belmont. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Okay. Matt, you're up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I just.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Took a press 17 years, thanks.
That's right.
I didn't plan on saying this, but, you know, Cameron always says the right thing, and I just would like to say ditto to all the things that you said. Very good. Very well done. As I thought about trying to compress 17 years into some comments tonight, actually, I have to tell you, initially, I was in Crystal's office, our city clerk down here, and we were just, you know, bantering back and forth, and she says, so how's your speech coming along? I said, what speech? She said, you've been on the council 17 years, you have to have, you know, something to share, something to say. So, I said, well, I better get started on a speech. As I thought about what I was going to say tonight, the comments, the phrase that Abraham Lincoln wrote in the Gettysburg Address came to mind. Government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And so, what I want to do is format my comments, and hopefully they're not too long, in that structure, starting with of the people. Of course, were of the people as elected officials. But you don't get elected to council alone. Ask any of the recent candidates, and they'll tell you. It takes an army. And I've never done this before, and I just want to give thanks by mentioning their names, the people who helped over the years in my four campaigns. Some of these people aren't with us anymore. Some of them have moved away. Some of them are here tonight. But I just want to give them the honor of saying, I recognize the fact that I didn't get to be in this seat and serve this community and do something that, you know, changed my life, it actually, you know, some regards changed all of our lives. You don't get to do that without having people help you to get there. And so, I just want to go through this list really quick. Dee and Fred Fastenow, Nancy Oliver, Caravonk, Angela Mallett, Sandy Metten, Lon and Sally Quelos, Keith and Diane Anvik, Bob Black, Clint Miller, Glenn Gelino, Steve and Jodeen Murgati, John and Mary Maltabano, Keith Vaughn, Emily Paz, Chris Edwards, Bonnie Regalia, Dawn and Marcia Johansson. I can remember these people sitting at my dining room table as we filled out forms to mail, putting stamps on envelopes, meeting at a restaurant on Neil Camino here on Saturday mornings to strike out and go walking precincts, just making phone calls, sending postcards. It's a lot of work, and, like I said, you don't do it alone, and I deeply appreciate what those people did to help me out. When it comes to by the people, that's what we do when you're elected, or even the staff members. And when I think of that, I think of the first council that I served on. The first council when I came on board in 2001. Tom Davis was a council member, Don Eaton was a council member, and Mike King. And then I came on board along with Inga Doherty, who she was taking on a two-year seat that had been left vacant by David Buckmaster when he resigned and moved up to the mountains. What was it? I'm trying to think of the name of the town he moved to, but. And I am grateful for the trust that you have placed in me. All of you and this entire community will always be a large part of my personal story, and I hope that I will be remembered as playing a very small part in your story. So thank you for five great years.
Matt, before we get to you, there's a few people that have come in that I want to introduce from other jurisdictions and whatever. And also, first I want to introduce our treasurer of the city of San Carlos, Michael Galvin, who has served us tirelessly. As I look around the room, I see Senator Jerry Hill has joined us. Thank you, Senator, very much. Hey, Senator Hill. I see that former mayor of Foster City, Pam Frisella, has joined us. And no, we are not related. And I also noticed that I -- are you the mayor now? The mayor of Milbrae, Gina Pappan, and council member Wayne Lee from Milbrae. Have I -- have -- pardon me? Oh, certainly. And I forgot, almost, but not quite, but thank you. Supervisor Don Horsley. Have I missed any electeds that have stuck in that I can't see because I'm not sitting up? Oh, I'm going to get to that on my speech, yeah. My speech, yeah. But anyway. Thanks, Ron.
Dave Bronstein's here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. David Bronstein, former mayor of Belmont. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Thank you. Okay. Matt, you're up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, I just --
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Took a press 17 years. Thanks.
That's right.
But I didn't plan on saying this, but, you know, Cameron always says the right thing. And I just would like to say ditto to all the things that you said. Very good. Very well done. As I thought about trying to compress 17 years into some comments tonight, actually, I have to tell you, initially, I was in Crystal's office, our city clerk down here, and we were just, you know, bantering back and forth, and she says, so how's your speech coming along? I said, what speech? She said, you've been on the council 17 years. You have to have, you know, something to share, something to say. So I said, well, I better get started on a speech. As I thought about what I was going to say tonight, the comments, the phrase that Abraham Lincoln wrote in the Gettysburg Address came to mind. Government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And so what I want to do is format my comments, and hopefully they're not too long, in that structure, starting with of the people. Of course, were of the people as elected officials. But you don't get elected to council alone. Ask any of the recent candidates, and they'll tell you. It takes an army. And I've never done this before, and I just want to give thanks by mentioning their names, the people who helped over the years in my four campaigns. Some of these people aren't with us anymore. Some of them have moved away. Some of them are here tonight. But I just want to give them the honor of saying, I recognize the fact that I didn't get to be in this seat and serve this community and do something that, you know, changed my life. Actually, you know, some regards changed all of our lives. You don't get to do that without having people help you to get there. And so I just want to go through this list really quick. Dee and Fred Fastenal, Nancy Oliver, Caravonk, Angela Mallett, Sandy Metten, Lon and Sally Quellos, Keith and Diane Anvik, Bob Black, Clint Miller, Glenn Gelino, Steve and Jodeen Margotti, John and Mary Maltebano, Keith Vaughn, Emily Paz, Chris Edwards, Bonnie Regalia, Dawn and Marcia Johansson. I can remember these people sitting at my dining room table as we filled out forms to mail, putting stamps on envelopes, meeting at a restaurant on El Camino here on Saturday mornings to strike out and go walking precincts, just making phone calls, sending postcards. It's a lot of work, and like I said, you don't do it alone. And I deeply appreciate what those people did to help me out. When it comes to by the people, that's what we do when you're elected or even the staff members. And when I think of that, I think of the first council that I served on. The first council when I came on board in 2001. Tom Davids was a council member, Don Eaton was a council member, and Mike King. And then I came on board along with Inga Doherty, who she was taking on a two-year seat that had been left vacant by David Buckmaster when he resigned and moved up to the mountains. What was it? I'm trying to think of the name of the town he moved to, but anyways. And then, of course, there were changes after that. I'm going to let Bob pick up at some point on this. But the second council that I served on after the first election, which was, you know, two years later, Tom and Inga kept their seats, of course, but that's when Bob came on the council in 2005. And along with Bob was Brad Lewis, I believe. Correct? Yes. And so that was the council back then. And Bob, I'll let you -- I don't want to tread on your ground there, so I'll leave it at that. You can take it from there.
I'll get the rest of them.
Okay. Staff-wise, when I came on the council, the city manager was Mike Garvey. Brian Moore was his assistant. We had a police department then. Jim Granucci was the police chief. We had South County Fire, and I was struggling to remember who was the chief of South County Fire. I can't remember. I think it's the fellow who ran some type of fire service, fire school. Bob, you might know his name, but I can't remember. See, this is because it's 17 years ago. Steve Watry was the community development director. And I remember, when I first came on the council, I was, you know, like a ball of fire. And Steve Watry took me aside one time, and he said, young man, if you keep running this race as fast as you're running, you're going to wear yourself out. You need to slow down and, you know, do a little bit more listening, a little less talking, and just watch what's going on and take it a little slower. It was good advice. Bob Lanzone was our city attorney. Christine Boland was our city clerk. Barry Weiss was our Parks and Rec director, and I believe Richard Avert was the finance director. And I can't remember the HR director. I know she retired later. And then the second administration that I served under was Mark Weiss. And by then, Greg Rothaus had become the police chief. We had the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department that Bob and I worked tirelessly with the Belmont members to create. We hired Doug Fry as the fire chief, and I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment. Christine, at some point in there, moved over to Parks and Rec, and then Crystal became our city clerk. Al Savay became our community development director, Chris Valley, our building official. And I believe Jeff was financial director at that time. So -- and then sometime after that, Mark retired. Mark Weiss retired, and Jeff took over, and you have basically the current city staff that we have now that does such a great job. And I'm not going to go through their names because I think you know them, but for the most part. It's been a long time, and I guess I look at myself kind of as a thread through a lot of beads, if you will. I want to go back to Doug Fry momentarily. He was the first person where I was involved in the hiring decision for someone to take on a position. Because council members, we hire the city manager and the city attorney, and we hire -- in that case, we were hiring the chief of the fire department that we jointly had with Belmont. So that was my first opportunity to hire somebody like that. It's very humbling because you realize what you're doing. You're changing someone's life, and that's a pretty big deal. For the people, the things we did, the things that I remember doing, the highlights for me, and I don't want to take all of these because I know Bob has some things too, but for me, it was -- South County Fire was falling apart. Something needed to be done. And I got together with Dave Warden over the Christmas holiday and discussed the possibility of trying to reconstitute a fire department between the two cities. And then Bob and I got involved, and we worked on it and created Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department that lasted, I think, for a couple of years, two years. That was a very big deal. Some of the other things that were highlights for me were, and they're not all positive to everybody, but we had the scoot buses that were running around. And then it came up that we needed to somehow fund that, and I wasn't in favor of it. And I worked on the campaign to not have that pass approval. Some of the others that I also worked on, you know, contrary to what the council was doing, was Measure U, the half-cent sales tax measure, and somewhat on Measure V, but not really a whole lot. The way I got my start was hacienda garden apartments were going to be torn down across the street here. And some of those ladies I mentioned that helped with my campaign, Caravonk and Nancy Oliver, some others, we were trying to save that iconic set of buildings. We managed to save four of them. You see them on San Carlos Avenue. When I came on council, there were some things going on in City Hall that I thought did not look right. And so I, you know, investigated and so forth, and changes were made, mostly had to do with contractors and contracts that we were dealing with. The Grand Boulevard was being talked about a lot back then, and part of the plan, and in fact, the way the plan was built, a median was put in that went from Britain all the way to San Carlos Avenue. You could not make a left turn into town. And I got together with a group that got organized called the El Camino Merchant Association, and we fought to have two intersections opened up, Cherry and Olive. And you see now that we're putting in a traffic light, so it must have been the right decision. Some of these other things I already mentioned that we had done with South County Fire and so forth, so I'll pass on the rest that I have on my list here. And I'll just close up with this. Well, I've got two things here. What I've been doing more recently as a council member in the last couple of months is awarding the city coin to certain businesses because I see how small town businesses, family-run businesses in this town struggle with all the development and the growth and the traffic and so forth. It can be difficult. And so the first city coin that I gave out was to Clock Tower Music. They do a lot in this community. They teach a lot of our kids how to play instruments. They hold concerts and do things like that. It's a great, great, family-run business. Brian and his wife Susan. Next, I gave the city coin to The Plantation because if you've ever been to The Plantation, as Mike King knows, it's a community within a community. It's a place that -- it's like Cheers. You go in there, and everybody knows everybody, and, you know, people share things that are going on with their families and the struggles they're having with their kids, and, you know, it's just a great little community within the community. And I commended Young and Sue for running their business even after they had to move it from where some new construction went on to where they are now. Next, I gave a coin to St. Charles Church because I recognized that church as -- it's one of the first, if not the first, congregation to establish itself in the city of San Carlos. And there's a lot of people here tonight, I think, who are, including Bob and Mike King and some others, who are members of that parish. And then finally, I gave a coin to The Burger's Garden, which has been there for 22 years. And it's just this iconic little business right there on the El Camino. Everybody that takes the train gets to see Burger's Garden. And what Bonnie is doing at that store is really commendable and really useful because if you think about it, as we build, I know I saw this living downtown in San Carlos and seeing all the construction going on around, and what happens to the squirrels, and what happens to the birds, and what happens to the wildlife as we're, you know, constructing and building and so forth. So I thought it was very commendable what she's been doing for 22 years to provide for not only people who, you know, want to use her services, but actually helping the wildlife around our town. Lastly, you know, as life, as you're up here on the dais, things continue to, you know, life goes on. I'll never forget the first time I went to a meeting, and I was shocked. It was the Airport Roundtable Committee that I was on, and the director of the airport, John Long, had gone sailing the weekend before our meeting on the bay. He had a heart attack, and he died. He was 60 years old. So you realize, life happens. We're of the people. Life happens while we're up here. For myself personally, I went through divorce. I went through some very lonely, single years. Some people in this town really reached out to me and, you know, says, all right, you're going to survive. And I'm glad I did. I met my wife, Vivian, and we got married and have been living downtown ever since. We -- when I got married to Viv, I gained two sons, Patrick, who's in the back, and Daniel, who's right here. 2015, I went through cancer in May. I was diagnosed with cancer. And February of 2016, I finished up that. Been in remission ever since. So life, you guys that are coming on, you kind of have to hold two things. This, more lightly, and then really hold on to family, your faith, and pay attention to life that's going on around you. It's not all about being up here. Thank you.
I have a few things to say. First, I'd like to again echo the comments that were made, thanking Jeff and his staff. I'd name them all, but I'll leave names out, and that's the last thing you want to do. I'll be reaching out individually to each of the staff members that need to speak to, and all the people that work that aren't the directors every day, as was mentioned, that do a job that no one knows about, no one sees, but it's why this city runs so well. Jeff has assembled a terrific staff, and up and down the peninsula, I'll match our city staff to anybody's and how our city is run. And before that, Mark Weiss, who I served with, and he had a difficult time because we had to cut every year. We had to cut. And I know it affected him greatly to have to do that, but he did a great job of trying to balance off the cuts and yet provide basic city services. And Jeff also had to pick up part of that, and then fortunately, the economy as well as good leadership carried us through to where we are today. But I can't say enough about the people who work every day, both in this building and out in the field, all the folks that do all the heavy lifting and the police and fire services that we have. We're so blessed to have the folks that we have. It was alluded to, the old council that -- older council. I know, geez, that sounds terrible. People that I served with. I did not serve with Mike King and Don Eaton, but they're both here tonight. In fact, Brad Lewis and I were the ones who replaced them in November 2005. Tom Davids, who I served with, Mr. San Carlos. Tom was not a loquacious speaker, but when he spoke, I listened, and I'm always thankful for the fact that I did listen. Inga Teagle Doherty, who she and I spent many nights together on the planning commission and on city council. So I want to thank her for 25 years of friendship and her counsel. Brad Lewis, who I was elected with, he did not go Hollywood even after he got his Academy Award for Ratatouille. Brad was always a sounding board for me and someone that I reached out to seemingly every meeting and tried to get some information on what the heck are we doing here on this? Omar Ahmad, who is probably the most passionate council member that I served with. We lost him way too soon. Omar, when he got his teeth into something, he just kept going with it. We had a few go-rounds, but it was always respectful, and I'm sorry that he's not with us anymore. It would have been fascinating to see what would have happened. Randy Royce, probably the person I served with that had the greatest spirit I've ever seen. Randy's no longer with us either, but he just always had a smile on his face, and he always tried to work for the people of San Carlos. He'd been here a long time, and he wanted to make sure it was the best city that he could make it. Andy Klein, who's in the back, stepped in when no one else stepped in. 2009, no one wanted to run for this job. Matt and I were incumbents. We put our names in, and there was nobody else, and Andy stepped in. He stepped up, and he provided some good leadership and, again, wanting to do the heavy lifting to get us out of the situation that we were in. So I thank Andy for that. Karen Clapper, who I don't know if she's here tonight, but she also stepped in when we had a vacancy and stepped up. Karen also provided council and good order to, again, she now works with, I know, friends at the library. She's downstairs seemingly 24 hours a day doing books, but again, a person who wants the community to be above everything else. And my current colleagues. What can I say? Ron Collins. I never liked him. Ron was the first person I called when I thought about running in 2005 because I thought if Ron was going to run, I wasn't going to run because he would clean my clock because he was born and raised here. And what an honor for him to be on the council now and to have served as mayor, perhaps to serve as mayor again. I really appreciate all the times that we've discussed things and bounced things around. So Ron, it was always a pleasure. Cameron Johnson. It was hard because I had to mentor him about technology for five years. It was just, it's just, it was really hard, but we made it through. I think he knows how to use that, whatever it is that he has here, because I have no idea what it is. I tell people, I'm from the last century, and I still, you may not have noticed, but we have iPads up here for all of us. However, one of us doesn't use an iPad. I'll let you guess who that is. And it's not Cameron, it's me. I appreciate all the work, and again, what I liked about Cameron is that he came from a different perspective. He's younger than I am, by a far margin. And the perspective that he brought to the council, I think, was great because he had a different spin on some of the stuff, and we worked it out together, so it was good. Mark Olbert. I have a few questions for Mark, but he probably has some of his own, so I won't go there. Mark probably does more digging into each of our items than any of us, maybe combined. And that's a good thing because you have to have people that sometimes get into the weeds, and Mark is good for very good analysis and very much of questioning things that are coming up to us, that are presented to us by staff, and you have to have that. It can't just be rubber stamps up here. And so I appreciate all the work that you've done on it, Mark. And lastly, but hard to say, Matt Grocott. What can I say about Matt that hasn't been said already by so many people in this community? 17 years, and he always had a perspective. Sometimes it wasn't the one I had, but it was always a perspective that eventually I grew to respect more and more, how, again, you can be against things but have a different perspective, and you need that. Again, as I said before, we can't all just be all going, oh, yes, it's 5-0 every time. And Matt provided a certain source of input that I think basically made us better council and made better decisions, so thank you for that. Before I go to the next folks, I have some gifts for the council. I have one for everyone, and I also have them, by the way, for the new council. So these are little time things that might last a minute or two. I would suggest that you put them up when you go to speak, and when they finish, you finish. And people will be much happier. But I'll leave these up here so folks can grab them. I want to thank the new council members. I want to thank Sarah and Laura and Adam for running and for running hard and for bringing out the items that needed to be brought out in this environment. I know you're going to do a great job. I want to thank Ken Castle and John McDowell also for running. It's not easy to run for office. It may look like it, but it's not. You have to put yourself out there, and you have to be willing to have people disagree with you. I thought everybody liked me when I ran, but that wasn't the case, okay? Nor is it today. And I applaud the three folks that are going to be our new council members, and I know they're going to do a great job, and so it's going to be terrific. But I'm still going to have these for you, too. I want to thank all my friends that supported me over all the years. I want to thank all my friends that, that supported me over all the years. I had a, I don't have a big family, but I did have a lot of friends that stepped up and really helped me to get elected and to give me counsel, even when I didn't want to hear it, but they gave it to me anyway. And to also let them know that now I'm not gonna be the mayor anymore, so they'll probably talk to me more, so that'll be fine. And lastly, I want to thank my partner Cathy, who's supported me the last four years and listened to me babble on about being the mayor and asking if the room was big enough. And thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. And lastly, I want to thank the citizens of San Carlos for having their faith in me to elect me three times and to, basically, even if they didn't agree with me, to come out and be active. And that's what I hope everyone's gonna be. I mean, I see a room like this, and I am, I am excited. If we could have a room like this on every city council night, I'm not kidding, it would be so much better, because you'd have so many people with input, so much folks with input. And that's what we need. The more input the council gets, the better off that we are. So I really, I really thank everyone in the city for, for, for supporting me, but also to get involved. And as I, as I finish, I want to just quote, I sound like you now, Matt, I'm gonna quote Theodore Roosevelt. And I think you know what I'm gonna say. It's, it's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. So again, get involved, whatever it is, your neighborhood, your block, whatever group you're in, be involved. And the more you get involved with city government, the better off everyone's gonna be. Okay. The next thing is presentations. So Chris, I think I'm turning this over to, to Crystal, or what? No, I'm not. I am?
Did you want to speak now?
You want to speak now, or you want to speak later? Because that's what Crystal was saying. You and Mark would speak later when the other people came up.
Okay. If we can have, actually, Mayor Bob Grisilli, retiring Mayor Bob Grisilli, step down from the dais.
Okay.
I'd like to invite Senator Jerry Hill and the representative from Assemblymember Kevin Mullen's office, thank you, to go ahead and present their proclamation.
It's really quite, quite an honor to be here tonight, and it's with certain, certainly mixed blessings, because in listening to Matt's comments and the history of the council members, the staff, I mean, it's as if I lived in San Carlos all these years, because I have such an affinity and such a fondness for everything in San Carlos. And just sitting there, looking up at that beautiful seal, and the city of good living. And that is how I've always known San Carlos as that city of good living. And Cameron talking, and everyone complimenting the staff, which you have an outstanding staff and city manager. But it isn't an accident that it is the city of good living. It's because of the leadership of the council. It's the decisions that you make. Come here, Bob. Come on, Mr. Mayor. You're part of that, too, at least for a few more minutes.
Yeah.
And it's the, it's really the, the coming together, the creativity, the leadership of representing the people of this community in San Carlos. And Matt, and I've got, I want to have something for all of you that are leaving, but I have to be reminded of your comments about Abraham Lincoln, of the people, by the people, and for the people, because that's exactly how you have conducted yourself over the years, always about transparency and for the people. Bob, you have shown the leadership for a long period of time, and not just in San Carlos. You have been that ambassador everywhere, everywhere you go, in representing this city. And where we've become good friends, and I've enjoyed it so much, is at those other functions around the county, where you would be there representing the city, but also kind of sharing the love and the good wishes for, of San Carlos for everyone in the good work, whether it's through nonprofits or every place else you have been there doing that. And you've done it with love, commitment, and caring, and a dedication to the people of San Carlos that you don't see everywhere in every elected official. So thank you for your leadership. And on behalf, Carol Ong is here from Kevin Mullen, Assemblymember Mullen's office, and Kevin is ill this evening, unfortunately. He would be here, but we want to present this little resolution on our behalf from the state legislature to thank you for that leadership.
Next, if we can have Supervisor Don Horsley come up with his proclamation for, for Bob.
Well, you're gonna have so many plaques that I don't know if your garage is gonna be able to fit them all.
I'll have Pam and Gina help me carry them out.
Okay. Well, I just, as you were talking about all the council people that you've served with in the past, and I've been around as long as you, and so I've known all those people as well. I have to say that, you know, it's the city of good living, obviously, for a reason, because of the citizens that really participate and leaders that have been elected. And I really do admire all of you, and I've really enjoyed, I think I've worked with every single one of you in a different capacity of one sort or another, and I certainly have worked with Bob as well. But one of the things I think about most was, it was an era when, probably when I was a pretty new supervisor, and the city was in deep financial problems. So I think you had a deficit of, if I have it correct here, it was about 3.5 million is a structural deficit, which means that that rolls from year to year to year. And you, and you're the council member at the time, and I'm sure Matt was part of that, had to make some really tough decisions, basically, with your fire department and eventually with your police agency. And you made some really tough decisions that made a difference in this community, and so now the city has a $7 million surplus, which all the new people, you can now spend all that money. It's fun, more fun spending it than, you know, cutting. Actually, it's not. What happens is that it's just tough when you have to cut. It's tough as when you have money, because then everybody wants it, of course. But I also have worked with you for, I remember being on CCAG, and CCAG was, it's the City County Association of Governments. And those meetings could go on and on and on and on. And thank God, you were the chair, and you made sure that we got home by at least nine o'clock instead of midnight. So I always appreciated that. So in any case, I appreciate your leadership and your friendship. I always value your friendship and your dedication to this community.
Thank you, Don.
And then next, if we can have Brian, Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Jackie Speer's
So Bob, on behalf of Congresswoman Speer, she did place comments into the congressional record, and if I can get them out here far enough where I can actually read them. I just want to read two paragraphs for you, okay? So Bob, these are gonna last forever in history, whether you want them or not. One anecdote illustrates Bob dedication, Bob's dedication to public service. As mayor, he was alerted to a dangerous road condition that had been inadvertently created by a city road contractor. He drove to the scene and confirmed that the intersection was dangerous. He contacted the city manager and then waited about 90 minutes for a crew to show up to fix the problem. At the time, Bob was wearing his signature lime green polo shirt. It served the dual purpose of alerting oncoming traffic from 1,000 people away. I knew Pam would laugh at that. And it protected Bob from being hit. Unfortunately, it also created its own hazardous road condition. Bob knows so many people in San Carlos that motorists and pedestrians would honk or shout out and wave to him, sometimes even congratulating him on his fashion choice. But they also sometimes lost track of where they were in the dangerous intersection. Thankfully, no one got hurt. The insight from this anecdote is clear. Bob Grisilli dresses for success and never leaves until the job is done.
Thank you. Forever record. History, Bob. Just like Mount Rushmore.
Okay. Mark and Ron, if you'd like to present the gifts from the city to, to Bob.
We do have a proclamation here for you, of course, but before we get to that, there's one other thing that's very, very important. Bob has been mayor several years in a row now, and you heard me allude to, as I was walking down here, that we keep threatening him with having to be mayor for life. We couldn't quite pull that off. Turns out, it's against state law to do that. But I understand that, that you got really interested when you were on your trip to, recent trip to Ireland, about the Lord Mayor positions. And so I'm here to show you, and, and your, your friend was the one who was able to find this. May we present the Lord Mayor of San Carlos?
Now I know why he just wanted me to hold the proclamation. That is just amazing.
Oh, backwards.
Well, I was gonna say a few things later, but now that I have the mic and I'm standing up, and Bob's right here, I should probably say. It is true, he did call me in 2005, and he, and he called me at work, and he said, "Are you gonna, are you gonna run for council?" And I said, "Where did that come from?" He said, "Well, if you're gonna run, I'm not gonna run." I said, "Why?" He says, "No, I'm just not gonna run." And I said, "Trust me, I'm not running. I have too many things going on in my life." And so he ran, and I'm really glad he did, because he has become probably one of the most respective and respectful and respected and even keeled mayors that we've ever had. I've learned a lot from him. He has, he's paid attention, he's made sure I paid attention. And he has done a lot for this city, and I've never had, never seen meetings run so well. He makes sure that we get out on time, because we don't want him falling asleep at 11 o'clock at night. But I am, and we are all very grateful for his service to San Carlos, and it's been very much a pleasure of mine to serve on the council next to him. Thank you, Bob.
So actually, we have a gift of a clock, so that when it gets past 10:30, it has an alarm that goes off, so you'll know. And the flowers are for you also, but I'm not gonna hand them. Do I guess I can? You can. What? You're gonna hand them to Kathy. I agree with everything that Ron said. I just want to add, from my point of view, I've very much enjoyed working with you. You have always been a great guy. You've done a lot of work for the council, done, played many roles, done them all well. I very much admire the fact that, whether it's asking staff to, you know, demanding that staff take you through the numbers, or dealing with tense council situations with large, large groups of people, with grace and poise, you've done a great job of it. But personally, for me, the thing that really I will always remember you for was during the debate we had on the welcoming city resolution, where you shared some of the experiences that you had younger in life, earlier in life, that caused you to want to do whatever you could to make life better for everybody. And that, to me, is the essence of Bob Grisilli. I would wish you a happy retirement, but I know with all of the philanthropic endeavors you're involved in, you ain't gonna have a retirement. So I expect to see you around, and it's been great working with you, and best of luck for you going forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, if we can have retiring council member Matt Grocott step down. And then we'll go ahead and start again with, with Senator Jerry Hill and the representative from Assembly Kevin, Assemblymember Kevin Mullen's office.
You know, it's interesting that Mark mentioned that about state law preventing him from becoming mayor for the life. He's already talked to me about changing the state law. Matt, this is really an honor for me to present this to you. We go back a long ways, and, and I enjoyed your, your history of San Carlos and the people involved very much. And again, I want to say, of the people, by the people, and for the people, that's exactly how you have conducted yourself on this council. Your, the issues of transparency, open government, and getting the community involved are so important, sometimes not said, you have said it, and, and you have brought, I believe, a fresh view often to the council. And I think we all respect that. And as said, sometimes you and I have not agreed on a lot of things, or some things, a lot of things, actually. But that's okay, because I respect that, and you bring so much to the conversation. You get everyone thinking about what's important and what's necessary for a community. Thank you for that, and thank you for that commitment to San Carlos. And on behalf of Assemblymember Mullen and Carol Ong, who's here to present that this is a resolution from the legislature for you.
And Supervisor Don Horsley?
Well, Matt, you and I have served together as well on committees. I remember, well, actually, we've had a lot of interactions. We used to appear before chambers of commerce and these introductions to folks who wanted to know more about city and county government. And one of the things that, I'm not surprised that you came up with a quote from Abraham Lincoln, because every time we were at one of these dais, you would always come up with these really pithy quotes, usually from your wrestling coach. I only remember my wrestling coach just said, "Hey, Horsley, do more push-ups." But you had these really great quotes, and I really learned to respect your viewpoint. We don't necessarily, we didn't necessarily agree very often, but you made me think. Well, you know, we did, we did have lots of differences of opinion, but you actually made us better, because you actually made us really think about what we were doing, what we were saying. I think you made, I think you made our arguments a lot sharper, and I think as a consequence, I think you added a lot to the dialogue between us, this, you know, the city, the county, as well as the constituents as well. And I've always admired your integrity and your willingness, as Cameron said, your willingness to stand up for positions. Sometimes they were positions for the people who don't have as much, maybe are the, you know, kind of a smaller groups of people, but you were their advocate for them. And for that, I really admire you and admire the service that you've brought to this city. And also, just like Bob, during those times when the city was in desperate financial positions, you had to make some tough decisions, and you did it, because of the fact that you cared mostly about this community and you're willing to make the tough decisions. And, and I think in the long run, it's really worked out well for the city. Obviously, the city is doing really well, and it's, I think it's in no small measure because of your leadership. And for that, I think I have to really thank you and salute you for your service.
And Mr. Perkins from Congresswoman Speer's office.
Matt, as a resident, let me also thank you for your service. She has placed this into the congressional record as well, and let me just read briefly from the last paragraph, okay? After many years in public service, Councilman Grocott has decided to move on to different challenges and will also have more time to spend with his wife and stepsons. He will be remembered as a man who believes passionately in local government. While a community may ultimately speak with a single voice on about a given subject, it takes many voices to create this result. Through long nights and difficult deliberations, Councilman Grocott contributed to governing San Carlos toward a better future. I join the community in thanking him for his service and wishing him well in his future endeavors, Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
And Mark and Ron, if you're ready to present the city's proclamation and gifts. And I was gonna invite Vivian and Patrick and Daniel, if you want to come up also. And I was gonna invite Vivian and Patrick and Daniel, if you wanna come up also.
Come on up. Vivian, come on up. I know, that's fine. Hey, good to see you again. So, Matt, I actually was thinking tonight about how the first day, first time I met you was at a meet and greet at Susan Rose's house back in 2001, when we were each running for office. You were more directly running for the council. It took me a few extra years to figure out that's where I wanted to run, because I was running for the school board. And, you know, I have always been very impressed by and very respectful of the fact that your fierce determination to make sure that this council, and any council that you've served on, does the very best that it can for the people that it serves. We haven't always necessarily agreed on stuff. We have agreed on a number of things, but... Yeah, that's true. That's right. I remember, we both, we both noticed that. But you know what? As Don was saying, that's not really the important part. The important part is the dedication to insisting that government do a good job for the people that it serves. And you've clearly done that. I really admire that dedication. I admire the fact that you are always willing to be the person asking questions that sometimes other people don't wanna ask. And if the answer isn't clear, you say, "The answer's not clear. Give me, give me the real answer. Give me another answer." And finally, I think the other thing that a couple of people have touched on, I think that you've done a great job of making sure that folks who may feel that they're not part of the process, sort of the little guys, okay, get their voices heard. And that's really important. So, I thank you very much for all your service on behalf of the community, and I wish you luck and joy and happiness in the next phase of your life with you and your family, and I'm glad to have had a chance to serve with you.
I'd just like to echo what Mark said. You know, when, before I was on the council, I would watch these meetings either in this room, or I'd watch them on TV, and I would think, "Boy, that just looks like an easy job." You know, you come for a couple hours, you make a couple decisions, and you go home. Well, it's not easy. It is, it is a difficult job. There's a lot of issues to deal with all the time. There's a lot of time in between meetings and before meetings that you spend. The public does not see. And for Matt to do that job for 17 years is nothing short of amazing. I don't know that, I can't, the last 17 years, I'll be 90 years old or something. So, I won't be able to do it. But Matt has, he's battled cancer, and he's battled people that didn't agree with him, but he's held true to his convictions, and he's been one of the most patriotic people I've ever known. And I also wanna thank you for that pocket constitution. I do refer to that quite often. But, you know, I, he was on, what, nine years before I, or 10 years before I ever even came on the council. I didn't know whether or not I'd be able to serve with him, but I'm glad I had the opportunity. Last seven years has been very educational. Matt, as Bob said, he always makes you think, and you all, and I would question my own decisions, my own feelings on certain things, my own inclinations. And because of that, I think he made me and he made the rest of us all better council members, because, as Bob said, we aren't a rubber stamp. We have to think all of these issues through, and think through the job, and make sure that we're doing the right thing for the people of San Carlos. So, Matt, I, again, I wanna thank you for 17 years of wonderful service to the city of San Carlos. We also have a clock for you. You'll have to set it, I'm sorry. Yeah, it has an alarm, it goes off at 10:30, so. And it has a two-minute timer, too, so. Anyway, thank you, Matt. We have this for you, and for Vivian, we have some flowers. She's filming. All right. Okay. I guess I'll take it later. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Last, but definitely not least, retiring council member Cameron Johnson. And then we'll continue with the order of presentation, starting with Senator Hill and Representative from Assembly, Mullen's office, then Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Spear's office, and Supervisor Horsley.
Cameron, there you are. This is kind of a short, I mean, when you think of the five years that you spent on the council, but look at what you've done. You know all that money they're talking about? It's because you're here. Take credit for it. My goodness. That was a big recession we had before that. But, you know, I, I've looked at the, and listened to the different roles you've played in the city, whether it's on SAM Trans, or CCAG, the library. I mean, you've taken on some tough challenges, and especially when you look at the regional approach that San Carlos has always taken a strong position in looking at this entire county. You know, some cities, they just wanna stay within their city and not get involved. San Carlos has always been a leader in what goes on around them, how they participate and become a player in that, but also how they make sure that their residents get what's best and for their, their interests, and what works best for them, whether it's transportation, whether it's funding for housing, whatever it is, you've been a crucial part of that. And I think it's been an outstanding role for you, especially with your background and the experience that you bring to the council. So, Cameron, thank you for your leadership. We're going to miss you, but you're still a lot, you're young, so you'll be back, I'm sure. Give it a few more years, and you'll come back to do it one more time. Cameron, thank you for that strong position. On behalf of Assembly Member Mullen...
Okay, Cameron, you and I worked together for the last, actually, five years on the Transportation Authority, and you did learn something from Matt. You did say no on occasion, and that was good, because again, that, having these, having somebody actually challenge, and, you know, instead of just rubber stamping decisions, making, really actually challenging staff, the other commissioners as well, is really, really a vital part and something that sometimes, sometimes in some agencies and some boards is missing, and you certainly filled that role, and you filled it admirably. What people probably don't know about you on that, some of the things that we've done on the Transportation Authority, there's a, there's going to be a bike and ped overpass on Holly Street. And I told Cameron the other day when we were finishing our meeting, that one day, you're gonna see that bike and ped, you're gonna say, "I did that," because you were the guy that really fought for it and got the initial money for it. If it hadn't been for your persistence, perseverance, it would not have started, it wouldn't have gotten off the ground. So, I wish that you were staying with us. You are a rare talent. I used to think that you'd become a U.S. Senator one day, but that's, that's still available at some point, so if you ever want, in any case, you have my support if you decide to run. In any case, it's been a pleasure working with you. I really have enjoyed it, and wish you the best.
"As a council member, Cameron excelled in his communication to residents. His charts and verbal explanations of public policy were clear and built credibility in all public services. He readily stood at the farmer's market and answered questions from the public. In all these communications, it may help that Cameron Johnson is also the Director of Product Innovation for Netflix. Indeed, one can readily imagine a primetime television show based upon his public service experience." "The real council members of San Carlos featuring, featuring Bruce Willis as Mayor Bob Gressili." This is in the congressional record. And Justin Timberlake as Vice Mayor Cameron Johnson. Admittedly, this is not likely to produce a blockbuster rating around the country, but there may be a block or two in San Carlos where the series would be a big hit. "In closing, the people of San Carlos owe Cameron Johnson a significant vote of thanks for his efforts to improve their lives. We saw, he saw a challenge and seized it with both hands, at least when his hands were not otherwise holding his two children, Josephine and Ellis. We must also thank his wife, Selena, for her patience as he contributed to the community. It has been my pleasure to watch Vice Mayor Cameron Johnson become an outstanding leader in San Carlos, and I count him as a personal friend. He will now leave the council, but his smile, facile mind, and goodwill will be remembered for many years to come." Jackie Spear.
Okay. Then Mark and Ron, and Selena and Josephine Ellis, if you wanna come up as well.
I wrote down all these things about all my retiring council members today, and of course, I forgot to bring them up with me, so. And I spent so much time on it, and I'm not very good at extemporaneous speaking, so, Cameron, I really wanted to express these thoughts today. So, it's really hard to describe the shock that I felt when Cameron told me last winter that he wasn't gonna be running against again. I thought he was a lock for a second term, and, you know, I thought that he brought a fresh perspective, a fresh energy, and fresh ideas to the council. He's been idealistic without being an ideologue, and that is really hard to do in this day and age. He's an outside-the-box thinker, he's always willing to consider alternative points of view. He's thoughtful and considerate, and exactly the type of person that we should all want to represent us on this council. And I'm not sure I saw anyone work harder than he did when he was mayor. I think he had something going on every single day. At the end of the year, he reintroduced himself to his wife and said, "Remember me?" But Cameron, you're still young, and you have so much talent, and I hope you don't stay away from public service too long.
Cameron, I've had a lot of fun working with you over the last five years. I'm sorry that it's not gonna be longer than that. I've always admired your ability to, as other people have mentioned, to articulate very complex issues in a way that anybody can understand. And I can't tell you, in all honesty, the number of times I've sat on the dais after you finished speaking going, "Man, I wish I could've said something like that, that way." And I think that's a hallmark of the leadership that you've brought to the council, and I know that you bring to everything that you do. I'm very excited about the fact that you are helping the San Carlos Community Foundation launch, and I look for great things from that as a result of your participation in it. And, but I'll also say that, well, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you on the dais. I know that there's a couple of young children who are gonna be really, really happy about the fact they get their daddy back. So, thank you very much, sir. Here, this is your clock. Remember, alarm, 10:30, it has two-minute timer, all that kinda stuff. Oh, there's, oh, there's no batteries in it. And, for you. Thank you.
And we have received one speaker slip for this item, so if Charles Stone, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
You get one minute. For those who don't know, Charles Stone, a member of the Belmont City Council.
Good evening, Honorable, or Bob. And honorable council members, thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak briefly. I bring with me the warm regards of Councilmember Warren Lieberman, who very much wanted to be here tonight, especially for you, Matt, and for you, Bob, both of whom with, boy, I butchered that. Both of you he's worked with for many years, and he wanted me to let you know that the only thing that would keep him away is the council member in Lafayette, who originally inspired him to run for council, is retiring tonight in Lafayette, and he would try to be two places at once, but that one's a little tough. It's nice to be here tonight, because before I was on the council, I've heard stories that perhaps our two cities didn't always get along as wonderfully as they do now. Something about a messy fire department divorce, I don't know, it's before my time. But I very much enjoyed working with Matt on, we still have pension liability for our defunct fire department, and we have to meet every year and deal with it. Matt, it's been enjoyable working with you on that, and I sit here and I listen to 17 years, and I can't imagine doing it. That speaks to the type of man of principle you are. To get up and come back in here, oftentimes on the, on the losing end of a vote, for 17 years, is not easy, and I salute you for it. And also, I wanted to say a quick and special word on behalf of my departed colleague, Eric Reed. And I know that if he were tonight, if he were here tonight, he would thank you very much for the bond that you guys formed at cancer events, walking around the track at Carmon High School, and to know that you had a special friendship with him because of that, and that a positive thing came out of both of your diseases is very special to me. So, thank you for that. Cameron, we had a lot of fun on the library board. Cameron could always be relied on to push an already great library system farther along the road to technological advances, and it was fun to be with someone who was a little bit younger than the rest of the group, and to help, we weren't maybe as handicapped by the, the experience of going through the downturn while being in these leadership roles. And one of the things we were able to do together was to get the library system to free up some of its reserve, because there was kind of some residual fear that, you know, we've gotta hoard this money because we just went through this downturn. And that was a legitimate point of view, but then two, three years into an upswing, it was okay to free some of that money up, and we were able to do that, which has resulted in better service. I, I was thinking tonight, am I more grateful to you than I am angry at you for all the time your company has robbed of me, binge-watching things? And I think I'm much more grateful to you for the time we spent together working and the things you've done for this city and this county. So, thank you, and thank you to your family, because I know all those nights at Peninsula Clean Energy meetings and all that extra time comes from someplace. There's, even for you, there's a finite, finite bucket of time. Mayor Gressili, sir, it has been a very, very great pleasure to serve with you on things. And I learned early on in my career how a meeting should properly be run, because when we were on the Rethink Waste Board together, we went from having three-and-a-half, four-hour meetings, and then we elected Bob our chair, and they went to five-and-a-half minutes. Maybe it was a little longer than that. But you, you, your ability to handle anything with aplomb is something I am very jealous of. And your ability to be completely candid and honest and still have everyone like you is something that I can't figure out, but somehow you figured it out, and that's all that mattered. So, thank you very much for all your service, for your friendship, and thanks for helping to bring Belmont and San Carlos back to a good place. Congratulations on terms well served.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay. If not, Bob, Matt, Cameron, it's been a great pleasure working with you. Thank you very much for your service. It's bittersweet for me to say, if you can gather your things now.
Oh, thanks. What if we don't wanna go? My acolytes, this is great, I love this. Thank you, thank you. Another prize, thank you so much. Oh, God. All right, I'm gonna leave these three for the three, there you go, sounds good. The three, three newcomers are gonna get one of these, huh? No, honey, I got it, thanks, thank you.
Item 6C now, Administration of Oath of Office to our newly-elected city council members. So, I'll be starting alphabetically. So, Sarah McDowell, I'll meet you at the podium, and if you, and if Greg and your kids would like to come up, they're welcome to at this time. Ms. McDowell, if you can raise your right hand, please. "Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter."
I do.
You can sign right there. Thank you very much. Yes, you have a photo opportunity now, if you'd like. Next is Laura Palmer Lohan, if you can please come up. And you've requested that your sons Bradley and Gregory administer the oath, so I'll go ahead and step aside for that.
Will you please raise your right hand? Yeah, good, okay, cool.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Adam Rack, and Allison, and the kids, if they want to come up. Big girls. Okay, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I do.
Item 6D on the agenda is comments by newly-elected council members. So, we can start with whoever is ready.
I'm learning how to use the buttons up here. I'm not really sure how to do that yet. I feel so honored and humbled to be up here tonight. I want to start by recognizing our outgoing council members, Mayor Grisilli, Cameron Johnson, and Matt Grocott. You all have worked so tirelessly on behalf of our community, and you've given so much of your time and your energy to San Carlos, and we are all deeply indebted to you for all of your hard work in leaving this city in such great standing. I'm also very excited to work alongside Ron and Mark, and my new colleagues Adam and Laura, and I know that we'll continue to do great things for San Carlos. I am deeply grateful to all San Carlosians who put their faith in me and elected me to this office. One of my favorite things about being out on the campaign trail was knocking on doors and meeting so many of you, and you threw your door open wide and usually greeted me with a big smile and a hearty handshake, and you spent so much time with me talking about your ideas, and your opinions, and your thoughts about where you'd like to see our community go in the coming years. And I want you to know that I heard you, and I wrote many of your ideas down, and I'm going to work very hard to make sure that your thoughts and ideas are reflected in the work that we do as a city going forward. This election was the biggest midterm turnout in the county since 1982, so I want to thank everyone who voted and made your voices heard in this election. I also think it bears noting that tonight Laura and I join just a handful of women who have ever served on city council. Since 1925, only six women have served on our city council. I'm very proud to join that group and to have the opportunity to represent you up here on city council. I want to thank my family, my husband Greg, and my children Ryan and Leah. When one family member runs a campaign, everybody's in it, and they were a real team. My husband was a single parent a lot in the last year, and I really appreciate your support. And my children were out on the campaign trail, many of you met them. They knocked on doors with me, and they wore my T-shirts, and they passed out buttons, and they attended events, and I want to thank both of them for their support as well. My mom and my stepdad Carolyn Rick are here with me tonight, and my in-laws Kevin and Vicky, who are also huge supporters during the campaign, and I want to thank them very, very much. My dad is watching from home, so thank you for all of your support and advice. It was mentioned tonight that it really takes an army of volunteers to get someone elected, and it is so true. And I want to thank all of the people who worked so very hard to help me get elected and gave their time and their money and a lot of support and effort. I want to especially thank Andy Klein, my campaign manager, and Laura Touchele, my media manager, and Megan Miller, my treasurer. We were a small team, but we were mighty, and you put your heart and soul into helping me get up here, and I really appreciate your time and your effort. San Carlos is a very special community, and I feel so fortunate to be able to raise my children here. We look out for each other here in San Carlos. We get involved in countless ways. We volunteer in the classroom and on the sports fields. We participate in service clubs, from the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts to Rotary and Lions. We host block parties with our neighbors, and we hang out at the farmer's market, and we have a lot of fun together at Hometown Days, and all of those things are what make our community the special place that it is. I am thrilled to serve our community. My door will always be open to hear your thoughts about our town, and I will work my very hardest to represent you. I'm looking forward to working with our very talented city staff and all of my colleagues to ensure a very bright future for San Carlos. So, thank you.
I'm going to invoke what I'm now calling the Grisilli Rule. So, I'm honored to have been elected to this role and excited to serve all of San Carlos. We have a bright future ahead, and I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you to outgoing council members Bob Grisilli, Cameron Johnson, and Matt Grocott for your service and leadership. I also want to thank John and Ken for running this year. It's always better to have a contested election, even if it's a little more painful at the time, but it allows for greater diversity of ideas being shared and pushes all of us to get out and meet with the community. I know that I'm better prepared and feel more in sync with the people of San Carlos because of it. Thanks to my family for all their support throughout this process, and for all the many volunteers for their tireless efforts. Finally, thanks to the voters of San Carlos for their confidence in me to serve our community well. Really could not do it without your guys' support. And congratulations to Laura and Sarah. I look forward to working with you, Ron, and Mark, and with our fantastic city staff for years to come. Thanks.
I'd like to thank Mayor Grisilli, Vice Mayor Johnson, and Councilmember Grocott for your dedication and incredible service to our city. Very large shoes to fill, I'm pretty sure their size meant 11 and larger. I also want to thank all the San Carlos voters who made your voices heard. It's an honor, and I'm humbled to be your servant moving forward in this role. I also want to thank my incredibly beautiful family for your support and accompanying me on this journey. Kathy, Bradley, and Gregory, and thank you for Karen and Gary for coming tonight. I'd like to thank my campaign team and campaign supporters, the best campaign team and supporters ever. Mike, Kathy, 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 Paula, Libby, Annie, Lauren, Marnie, Ria, Kathy, Joyce, Jackie, Mindy, Amy, and Bob. You guys were absolutely incredible. A team, high-performing team. It's such a rare occasion to have such a thing, but I'm so grateful. I'd like to thank the city staff for your incredibly warm welcome and helping to onboard me so quickly. I'd also like to thank the Girl Scouts Troop 61865 Color Guard, that was outstanding. Along the way, along this journey, you've told me many things about what you loved about San Carlos and what concerns you about San Carlos. You love our unique charm, but you're concerned that that may be fading from view. You enjoy robust property values, but you're concerned that those who serve our community can't afford to live here, or that your children who are returning home from college can't live in the same neighborhood that they grew up in. You love our incredible parks and open space, but yet the population and the demands on these facilities are putting some strains on us. You appreciate and participate in the amazing cultural performing arts that we have in San Carlos. Music in the schools, chickens' ball, Kiwanis show, children's theater, and more, but yet we don't have adequate community space or a performing arts center. You recognize that our town is attractive, which is why developers are here, but yet you want them to stay here. When they come here, you want them to leave the place better than they found it. So, we have good news, right? We have a budget, there's money in the till and a little bit extra, but we have to be really mindful about what we do with this, and as our predecessors are sharing with us, it won't be easy to make those decisions. But I commit to you to keep the city running and running well, save for a rainy day, and manage the pension liabilities, seeing to it that the policy addresses our liabilities, but also maybe if we can try to save some money while we're doing that, that would be terrific. I look forward to working with the community. It was mentioned earlier that engagement, if we could have the room like this every other Monday night, that would be super awesome. So, I invite you every other Monday night to join us and help us make these difficult decisions. I look forward to working with council, staff, the residents, and our regional neighbors to address these issues that I've talked about. I want to help keep our community safe by collaborating with the fire department and our sheriff's office. I want us to maintain our civic charm and help our developers enhance our city, and work with our regional partners to keep San Carlos a convenient place to live, easy to navigate, could you imagine that, and find a place to park. Keep that downtown clean, let's return those trees to health, and keep San Carlos inclusive, and work with our neighboring cities to increase access and affordability to childcare and housing. I believe that as a community, we can do these things. We've created a beautiful and incredible community for which many people want to live and be a part of, and I know together we can do that. So, thank you very much, and I hope to make you proud over the next four years. Thank you.
Okay, item 6C now is city clerk to call for nominations for mayor. So, nominations for mayor are now open.
All right. Madam city clerk, I would like to nominate Mark Olbert for mayor.
Second, oop, go ahead.
Second, the motion? The motion?
Okay.
Isn't that from a song?
Okay, I'm closing the nominations for mayor. Any discussions? Hearing none, I will take the roll call vote for Mark Olbert as mayor. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote. And Mark, if I can meet you at the podium to administer your oath? Raise your right hand, please. Mark Olbert, do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I most certainly do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. I did have a couple of comments to make, but I'm going to hold off until we do the selection of the vice mayor, is that correct, Crystal? Okay. Well, I will open the floor for nominations for vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Ron Collins for vice mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. And any discussion? Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Olbert?
Yes.
I very much, I just have a couple of comments to make here tonight, but they'll be very brief. In fact, I'll try the Grisilli Rule as well. I very much appreciate the confidence that my colleagues have shown in me and placed in me by allowing me to chair the council for the next year. I won't let you down. I actually look forward to a very exciting year. I think we'll work really well together. It's traditional for the mayor to outline her, his thoughts about what that new year will hold, but I'm not going to do that tonight. Tonight is about honoring the commitment of our outgoing colleagues and recognizing the commitment of our new colleagues, not anything else. That's the main thing on the table. Discussing the future can wait for a little bit. I do have one favor to ask, though, of my colleagues. While I occupy the role here, I would appreciate, if you could remember to do so, to being referred to as the chair rather than the mayor. I won't make a big deal about this if people forget, and I most definitely am not trying to set any kind of precedent for the future of the council by doing this. The jobs we've undertaken here, as has been alluded to by some of the previous speakers, are hard enough, and they are sometimes thankless enough, that I would never deny anybody whatever pleasure they may get from eventually becoming the mayor of San Carlos. I'm doing it and making the request just because I would like to remind the community that we are each and every one of us equal, each and every one of us approachable, and each and every one of us empowered to work on behalf of San Carlos. There are no firsts among equal here. With that, I would like to say that I look forward to working together, and I want to have us move towards closing the meeting and agenda-setting and adjournment. have us move towards closing the meeting and agenda-setting and adjournment so we can get to the really important thing of tonight, which is to go out and celebrate everything that's happened here. So with that, are there any other comments that my colleagues would like to make? Ron, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I didn't. I didn't prepare a speech. I was more concerned because my wife left early to sing, and I had to pick out a tie, and I--
I did that without her influence. I don't even know if I match her, so that was my--
Well, Ron, it looks like a very nice tie, but I have to tell you that--
It was a big decision.
They don't let me go out of the house dressing myself, so that's not necessarily good advice.
Just a couple of things I'd like to say. Again, I said some things about Bob and Cameron and Matt, but I really did enjoy serving with them for seven years. But change is good. It's good to see new faces on the council. We needed to be re-energized. But I'd like to ask Adam and Sarah and Matt to look around this -- huh?
And Laura.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam, and Laura. Sorry.
They're size eight and a half.
Yeah, all right. I should have known. I told everybody, "Vote for Sal," Sarah, Adam, and Laura, so I should have known that. But what I want to say to them is look around this room, because there are so many people in this audience that you -- whose wisdom you can draw on. You've got Don Eaton, former mayor. You've got Andy Klein, former mayor. I don't know if Mike King is still here, former mayor. I've gone out to lunch with all of these guys and picked their brains. You've got Jerry Hill. You've got Don Horsley. You've even got Brian Perkins, who may not be an elected official, but he works for one of the most important elected officials in our county. So we also have members of our audience who serve on other councils, like Gina Pappan and Wayne Lee. Pam Frisella was on Foster City Council for many, many years. Charles Stone, are you still here, Charles? I hope so. Charles and I have gotten together lots of times. We can learn so much from these people, and I almost forgot Tom Davids, one of the best council members we ever had. These are people that you can all learn from. Don't hesitate to call them up, have coffee or lunch with them, ask them about the issues that we're dealing with, because they have a wealth of experience, a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of wisdom, and you can draw from it. I know, I do. I never stop learning. This is a great community. I just, I think it's great that we finally have some diversity on the council. We have, you know, instead of four old white guys, and, you know, I'm sorry now that I'm the oldest. That's one reason I wanted to keep Bob around, so. But just to the public, I'd like to ask you to be patient with us. We, you know, 60% of the council's turned over. We're going to get -- we have to get to know each other. We know each other personally, but we don't know each other as council members. So it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be some getting used to how we all operate, the things we have to say, the opinions we have. We'll work it out. We've got some brilliant young people that have come to the council. They've lowered the average age tremendously, which I'm very happy about. But again, I just want to thank them for putting in the hard work. Running for council is not easy, and it takes a lot of dedication. It takes a family that is behind you and committed to you and is willing to give you up for a period of time while you try to make it. So I want just, that's all I wanted to say, was just to have patience with this. We'll figure it out, and hopefully we'll continue to serve this town well.
With that, I would actually like to move to do a little bit of agenda-setting. We don't normally do that at these transition meetings, but I have ideas for two different meetings that I wanted to run by my colleagues and see if you would agree with me that they're worth doing. As other people have mentioned, having a majority of the council turn over in one election is almost unprecedented. In fact, it may be unprecedented since the city was founded. I actually think that that argues that we ought to take some time to review our protocols and practices and cultural norms and how we do stuff, and decide how this council would like to work together. I think it would also be a useful forum for people to sort of ask questions about, well, how do we operate, how we do things? That's kind of an inside-baseball type of meeting, but I would like to see if we can try and fit that in before we dive into our regular calendar in January. So is that something that would be of interest to the rest of the dais?
Sure. I mean, I'm a little unclear as to, you know, exactly what you might have in mind. Do you want to put this on like the first agenda?
No, actually, I'd like to do it as a separate meeting, so it doesn't get in the way of other agenda topics. I don't necessarily envision it would be a really long meeting, and obviously, we'd have to figure out when to schedule it with the holiday seasons and whatnot, the holiday season and whatnot. But it's more a matter of having an opportunity to talk about how we operate, how we want to operate.
And you want to set a meeting like, you know, a public meeting in one of the rooms? You want to do it here, or what?
That, I think I will, if we decide to do it, I will leave it up to staff to arrange. Okay? I don't necessarily have a problem with having it here. It is a council meeting. It's just one where we're going to mostly spend time talking amongst ourselves.
Well, I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Sounds fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm open to a discussion about, it sounds like you want to talk about process and how we kind of work together through the meetings.
Yep.
That sounds good to me, too. Is that separate from the mini-retreat that we have?
Yes, it would be, because as I think it was somebody just said, it's really more focused on process and procedure, not on content, if you will.
Got it. Sounds good.
So Jeff, can we ask that you arrange that?
We'll reach out to you to try to coordinate a date that works for the full council.
Great. The second meeting that I would like to propose we do, this one doesn't necessarily have to be before we dive into our regular calendar. Again, because we've had a significant turnover in the council, something Ron and I had talked about about six months ago, when it became obvious that there was going to be a significant turnover in the council, is, gee, it would be really great if those of us who weren't out there knocking on doors and talking to people actually heard from those of you who were what sort of the pulse of the community is. I mean, we hear from people regardless, as you will continue to do so, but there is no substitute for actually knocking on doors and talking to people and doing meet and greets. So the idea for this meeting would be for the three new council members to share whatever they wish to share about what they've learned, and in whatever sort of forum, in any, whatever vehicle they want, presentation, verbal comments, what have you. And again, I don't think that needs to be done before we dive into our regular calendar, but I would like to do it earlier in the year rather than later.
Can we put that on a regular agenda? Just make it an agenda item?
I'm actually, I think it might take up, if done correctly, it might take up so much time, it would make a regular meeting really lengthy. And so my feeling is that I'd rather look to do it in a special meeting. And in fact, frankly, I failed to mention this. It's not, it's something I was thinking about, might even be a good fit if we could find a day that worked, to consider doing it on a Saturday, because it might be easier for the public to actually attend and also chime in. But those are kind of details of mechanics. I do think, I do feel personally that it would work better as a separate meeting than simply putting it on the agenda of another meeting.
Mark?
Yeah.
Can we, just two other thoughts around that. One, can, is it more efficient to provide it in sort of written form to share, or can we tack it on to the mini-retreat, since we have that already scheduled? That might be a good time to add to the mini-retreat, if the timing would work.
Yeah, you know, that's not a bad idea. We could certainly try tacking it on to the mini-retreat. Might be a good sort of starting point for that. I should also mention, again, something else I forgot to mention. I just wrote some of these things down this afternoon. My thought was, and this would still work with doing it, I think, at the mini-retreat, that if my colleagues were okay with this, I would also not require, but invite John McDowell and Ken Castle to make a brief presentation as well about what they learned. Because to me, speaking as one of the people who was not campaigning this year, I'm really looking to kind of learn what the pulse of the community is. So I think we could do that with, if we tack this on to the mini-retreat thing as well. But I also want to ask, you know, make sure the council doesn't have a problem with that. Is that reasonably okay?
That sounds fine to me.
Okay.
That sounds fine. I would, and I think, I liked the idea of the mini-retreat, adding it to that, because I think it will help inform the discussion.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I will ask Mr. Malpe if there are any -- I'm going to presume that nobody on the dais has any other comments they'd like to make, since they've been making comments all evening. That's what we normally do at the end of a meeting. So, Mr. Malpe, does staff have any comments to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few. I hope everybody's aware, I've worked here longer than Matt, so settle in. Somebody said earlier tonight that first and foremost were stewards of the public's interests, and I believe that wholeheartedly. I've dedicated my life to that. I've been very fortunate to be able to work with a lot of other people, both at the staff level and electeds, who share those sentiments. 18, 19, and 20, that's where you rank in the number of council members I've worked with in my tenure here. Councilmember, former mayor, King was on the planning commission when I was an intern here, took me under his wing, and was in no small part responsible for why I wanted to come back and work for the city as an analyst later in my career. I'm so appreciative to Cameron and Bob and Matt for their thoughts, their hard work, their shoulder to cry on sometimes, their swift kick to the rump when it was necessary. They've been terrific to work for. They've been very insightful about this community, and they've been willing to do a lot of tough stuff, and a lot of fun stuff, too. I think we should have fun when we're up here. I'm just thrilled with the council that we've got seated here tonight. I am really excited to be working with the five of you. The staff is very excited to be working with the five of you. Two of you in particular, I'd like to say it's about time, really. We're thrilled, and I know the community's thrilled as well. Not to leave you out, Adam, we're thrilled to have you, too, Mark and Ron, but really, really excited. We've got a full slate of things coming at us in 2019. We've got a lot happening in the state of California, a lot happening in the United States of America, and a lot happening on planet Earth, and some of that is going to filter its way down to us. And I'm very confident that the five of you are going to be able to lead this community. As always, your staff is here to answer any questions and support you in any way we can. So thank you very much, and congratulations both to the three members of the city council that we're saying goodbye to tonight. Don't be strangers. Come back. Continue to be our elder statespeople in the community. We need you, and welcome, and let's get to work.
And with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Cameron, Bob, and Matt.